Call in and then it can have the speakerphone. Okay, you guys will join me. One word of prep. Lord, just thank you for this day and just thank you for all you do for us, Lord. Just be with us as we discuss 2026 salary issues, Lord, today, and just help us to make decisions to the best of our judgment, Lord. Thank you for all you do, in your son's name, amen. The meeting will be called to order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, okay, thank you all for being here. We've got a few salary issues for 2026 to discuss. Called the meeting for that purpose so that Heather will be able to send out an email to everybody so that they can have that in conjunction with turning in their budgets by the end of the month, June 30th. So, we couldn't wait till our regular meeting, which is June 30th, to discuss these issues. So, the first issue I would like to go over is the tiered raises that we implemented last year. As you know, I was not able to be here for those discussions, but at that time, we went ahead and did the tiered raises five, 10, 15, and 20-year increment, you know, did it by five-year increments up to 20 years. So, I printed out a paper here for you to see what the cost would be for the county if we just continue with the 20-year, what it would be if we did the 25-year, if we increased that, and I took it out to 40-years. But after talking to Ben Rager, our financial person, we can comfortably, if we choose to do so, we can comfortably do the 25-year. We can also manage the 30-year. The 35-year and the 40-year, we cannot manage that. So, if you look here, I put on here, sorry, it's small print, but I broke it down by each department and who they would have in there. The new one for the 20-year, I'm sorry, for the five-year under the 20-year plan would be Amanda Laweland, and they've got her listed as an office manager. So, his amount for his department would be 1,500. For maintenance, I'm sorry, so they're getting paid in a year. So, by the time 2026 rolls around, they'll actually be in their sixth year of employment, but they would be getting the five-year. So, Keith Sanders in maintenance, Superior Court, Caleb Gerald's would be available, would be for 900, Kayla Martin, 900. In the probation department, there is an amount there of $3,300. And the reason that is there is last year, after we implemented the tiers, we changed Jeanne Anne Sanders' job description. So, if we, since we changed her job description to keep her in parity with the others, such as Joni Miller, we would need to increase hers. We would have to give her $3,300 to get her into parity with that. Under Sheriff County Correction, there's one employee, Ted Hawley. Ambulance, there are three. Health Department, there are two. Public Safety, there are four people. And then for Highway Admin and Maintenance and Repair, there is nothing there as far as for the 20-year. If you look, we have some different ones. If we go out to the 25-year, with the Prosecutor, we would add in Vicky Ite and Julie Krieger, and I've got the years of service that they will have in 2026. Superior Court, we would have Bridget Blanton. Under Circuit Court, then we would have additional for Joni Miller, Patricia O'Malley, Kim Pickett. Under probation, there would be additional on top of the 3,300 for Jeanne Anne, Kevin Headley, Julie Johnson, Mike Pate. And then the same thing goes on down here with the Highway Maintenance and Repair. If we go out to the 25-year, we would have Jay Boyer, Ron Wiggington, Michael Duckworth, Brent Dyer, Stephen Hayward, and Larry Helms. And then, as you can see...
I don't even see those names.
They're out to the right.
Yeah, I saw his names up there, but I don't see those names.
Need to talk to Highway Department? Jay Boyer.
Ron Wiggington.
He's down below Jay Boyers, okay. So, anyway, so those are the amounts, and it coincides with what, last year, we decided that department heads, first deputies, if they were a five-year employee, they would get 1,500. A 10-year employee would be 3,000. 15-year would be 5,000. 20-year would be 7,500. So, after the 15-year, it was implemented at $2,500 each year, each five-year increment cumulative. And then for second deputies and other employees, five-year was at 900, 10-year was at 1,800, 15-year was at 3,000, and 20-year was at 4,200. So, there, again, it was brought, you know, in accordance with $1,200. So, each of those amounts, I've got it with cumulative. Department heads, first deputies, elected officials, $2,500 for the five-year increment. On the 25-year, $2,500 for the 30-year. And then on the second deputies and other employees, it would be the 1,200 additional for 25-year and 1,200 for 30-year. So...
Well, I guess my comment would be that I think we should stop it at 20-years. I don't know how many do we stay? I mean, we've got a few on here, but I know that whenever I was working for government, for federal government, we had 10 steps in each GS level. And once you go through the 10-step, that's it. You are never getting another raise. So, that's kind of feel like the 20-year soft, you know. Maybe we'll get Nicole, which we got, but I personally think we need a 20-year cap.
Question for Karen. So, 10 steps in the GS level, but that didn't stop anybody from going to the next GS level though, correct?
That would have been promotion.
That's right. Promotion, which was open to them.
It started over.
Open to them.
Yeah.
Here, I don't think we have a lot of promotions open to people. If you're a second deputy, maybe you'll get promoted to first deputy, but once you're the first deputy, I think you're pretty much topped out on what you're talking about, a pay level.
Right.
I've got some opinions here. I've been new in this whole thing. The pros and cons of it, the pros are, in certain departments, we have low turnover. The cons are, certain departments, we have low turnover. When you look here at Circuit Court, Prosecutor, you've got quite a few employees that are long-tenured. I don't know how we balance the budget with rewarding people for loyalty to this county.
Well, my thought on that, just to talk to Karen, I guess, would be, I always thought that we should have some performance awards. And we could implement something, if some employee is exceptional, you know, their supervisor can put them in for an excellence award, and they could get a raise that way. That wouldn't mean that everybody just automatically got...
Yeah, just because you've been wearing the seat for however many years. Though, looking at this, in last year, when I was one of the proponents of moving this thing beyond 20-years, was trying to balance this. When you look at, when you look at one of the cons, it's a lot of money.
It is.
It's a lot of money for us to tie up. But when you look at one of the pros, let's look at this. How many of our actual department heads are in this group over here over 20? Our department heads, well, all elected ones, turnover, either statutorily or some other reason. Now, we've had a couple who have circulated the courthouse...
Right.
From elected job to elected job, and then been able to pick up more longevity. But most of them...
I think the only department head that we have that's been here for any length of time is Mike Pate.
Okay. And that's in probation?
Yes.
Yeah.
Because like you said, once you get into some of the other areas with the elected, you know, you're only, you're limited.
Yeah. So, are we talking that most of the people in this category, and I appreciate all the work either you or Heather, the both of you did on this chart, we're talking the majority of people on this chart fit into the second deputy other employee category? Or are some of them first out?
Some of them are first deputy.
They're classified first deputies?
Would be classified kind of like that. Amanda Laweland being an office administrator would fit into that kind of position.
First deputy.
Yes. Joni Miller, and then because we moved Jeanne Anne, hers would be that way. Also Bridget Blanton in the Superior Court. So, those would be, those are the only ones right there that would be considered like first deputy-type things. Let me look here. Just a moment and make sure on the maintenance one. I think on... I think Ron Wiggington would be kind of, I think he would be considered that too.
He is. He's considered foreman.
Yes, because he's a foreman.
Seven in the Highway Department, he's the only one.
Right.
Brent Dyer.
Brent Dyer, yeah. So, those would be the others that would be considered that. And I made sure, I talked to Deanna Martin to make sure, you know, within the Superior Court, Magistrate, Circuit Court, what those differences were. I had Marvin send me job descriptions, and so I did talk to her just to make sure. So, it would be, as far as like a first deputy-type thing, it would be like Joni and Bridget, and then the rest, whenever you get into those.
Well, I also feel this. This longevity chart can change about that quick. You have a Vicky Ite, and Julie Krieger, and Patty O'Malley, and a Kim Pickett, and Bridget Blanton, and Joni Martin, and Julie Johnson, Kevin Headley, and Melissa Sanders walk out in retirement.
Correct.
We have fixed a big hole in the budget right there. It's like, okay, we don't have 30, 35, and 40-year employees here anymore. They all retired.
Yeah, so then that would drop off, yes.
Yeah. So, again, I don't know the answer. I just know that, the reason I mentioned it is longevity is longevity. It never ends. Your service years never end. You just keep tacking them on, and tacking them on, and tacking them on. And for us to end the program at saying, hey, thank you for your 20-years, but your 30-years, you still get what we pay 20-year employees. Now, you may get it for an additional 10-years. What about this? What about going back to something less expensive after 20-years? We're still going to give you a bump, but we're not going to give you the 12 and $2,500 bump. That's why I asked about the original longevity plan was, you know, instead of, instead of us going the way we were, we did 200, 400, 600, 800, 1,000. Okay, let's go backwards. Let's say, hey, at 25-years, we're giving initial 1,000. At 30-years, it's 800, and at 35, it's 600, and at 40-years, it's 400. We're backing down off of this thing, but we still give them something. And it doesn't have to be those numbers. It can be 5, 4, 3, 2, 1, whatever we can figure out. But I know that this, this was a talked-about issue last year when we implemented it, and you had people say, I've been here 30, 40-years, and I'm getting the same thing that a person has been here 20-years gets. So...
I agree with you on that. I don't think it has to be the total amount of what the period is, but they should get something. But it, like I said, it can go backwards. It can level at one feet, or just one of the...
Like 5, 5, 5, 5, wherever you're marked.
Yeah, you just think about that. I mean, if somewhere at 20-years, so then at 25, 30, 35, 40, and 45-years, if you did $500, all they got was a $2,500 bump by the time they served another 20-years.
That's on top of what they already can tell.
Yeah, right. I think it would, it might, if we're looking at this and saying, well, we could do the 20 easily, and Ben says we can do the 25 easily, that's looking at the 25 being a $2,500 bump. If you take that $2,500 and stretch it out, then there's no reason you can't just go on out to 40 with it. Or, or down at the other end, if you take the 1,200 and divide that the same way, and stretch it out, and say, you know, we can't break the county over longevity. I get that. And we got a long, long-tenured employees in this courthouse.
And I think you've got to take care of the employees.
I agree with you. And I mean, we have, in 14-years I've been on campus, this is, the last few years by far has been, I think, very gracious, is giving raises and trying to get them up where we can keep them, much for the fact that in the Sheriff's Department, you know, there in the ambulance is the toughest place to fight. What if they're already at
40? Do we just add the 2,500?
Yes. Well, so if we went ahead and went up to the 25-years...
No, I mean, like, we're talking about if we go 500.
Okay.
And they're...
Yeah, so...
30 or 40.
Then you're going to give them 2,500. That would be like the...
That's what I'm asking.
Meeting the 25, yeah.
Which is not like ignore their service, we're going to go in and pay them like...
All the steps.
We're going to save them.
Yeah. You mean, instead of giving them a $500 raise, we give them the 2,500?
Yes, since they're already there.
That's, yeah, I mean, we can debate that, but I think that's appropriate. You know, it's funny that a group that's probably not going to get much longevity is the ones that are making the decisions.
Oh, yeah. Basically, the ones, we're the ones making decisions.
You're not going to see that. I'm not going to be here no 20-years. Let me make that on the public record.
Let me see.
You're going to see it?
They go by quicker than you think.
I know, but congratulations, Mr. Jarrett.
Yeah, there. And I think, you know, you're talking about with the years of service in here, a lot of these people possibly could retire. And you've seen a lot of these names on here, not speaking for them, but most of them could retire, but the insurance is the big issue. They're too young to draw insurance.
Right.
And everybody knows what that costs. So, I think when they hit these retirement ages, when they can...
Yeah, because they've been here, they've been here a lot of years, but they're not old enough yet for Medicare or whatever, so...
Patty's a year younger than me, and she's been here, yeah, well, she's 41-years, and he's only two-years older than me, so that puts him at 63.
Yeah. I'd say that's, I don't know where Vicky's at, but I do know that we graduated from the same school, and she's a year or two younger than me. And I just qualified for that blue and red card.
Yep. That makes a big difference here, sitting anywhere, just hanging on.
Yeah. I don't know. That's my two cents.
I like that idea.
So...
I think it'd be more achievable to progress it that way. That would be... And I think with the great mistake of playing their games up there now, you know, you don't know what's going to happen.
So, let me make sure I'm understanding this. So, we would still keep like through the 20-year, like what we've done, and so I've got that amount there. But those that we've got that have made it to like the 30, the 35, the 40, 45-year, we would go ahead this year and give them like the additional 500 per each year.
Yeah.
At each 50.
For each step, yeah. The 25-years would get an additional 500. The 30s would get 1,000. The 35, 15...
15, 20, 25, 40.
The 40.
Okay.
Two grand and...
Up to 45, 2,500.
Yeah. Now, I believe, because we already have a bump in there at 20-years, right?
Yes.
Yeah, the 20-years...
Yeah. At 20-years, you went, you had come up $2,500 from the...
So, you don't add the extra 500 to that? Is that what you're saying?
No, on the 20-year. On the 20-year, they would already get what they...
But 25, it's 1,000.
Yeah. So, 25-years, if they've been here 25-years, they would get $500. And then if they've been here...
Okay, they don't start at 1,000.
Right.
Okay, so...
And then at 30-years, it would be another 500. 35, another 500. And then 40 would be 500. And then are we going on out to the 45-year, or just the 40?
2,500.
Or is this all...
45-years is a long time to work somewhere.
You know, on this...
So, I mean, like, so if we did that, right now, what I've got calculated would be 17,100 for the total for our 20-years. But then if you add in Bridget Blanton, she would get, since she will have been here 36-years...
17,100 is already figured in, because we've already got that stat.
That's for the 20-year, yes. But what I'm saying is, that does not include like Bridget Blanton, Patricia O'Malley, Kim Pickett, Kevin, Julie, Mike. It doesn't include any of those that are out past the 20-year.
It should.
They've already received theirs.
Right, yes.
But I'm saying, so like in this amount, this is the new, these are employees that have hit the 20-year mark, the 17,100 are employees that for 2026 will hit that amount.
What about the people that were hit in 5, 10, and 15? Are those included?
Those are included in there, yes. And up to 20-years. But anything out past 20-years is not included in that first column. So, then we would add to that, like Bridget Blanton, we would add 1,500. Patricia O'Malley, we would add 1,000. Kim Pickett, 1,000. And then like Kevin Headley, he would get 500. Julie Johnson would get 500. Mike Pate would get 1,000. Melissa, or Jeanne Anne Sanders, would get 2,000 or 25, depending on if we're going 45-years. So, we would have those few that we would add to that.
You've got two people that's over 45 now.
Right.
I mean, I don't know why we wouldn't go ahead.
Go ahead and do it, so that they would get the 2,500.
See, I have a problem with that whole logic, because why are we, I don't think we should be looking at specific names. This should be, this is our policy.
I'm looking at years.
I want those people that have been here. It doesn't matter how long these people have been here. We're supposed to be setting a policy.
And which you did that last year with the 20-years.
But I don't think we should be looking at how many, I don't think we should be looking at any names. It should be, this is our policy.
Okay. But I'm just looking at these. These are the specific employees that we have that have been here for those specific years.
Right.
Yes, that's what I'm saying. But yeah, so we could take it out to 20-years, and then each year, each five-year increment after that, if we do like what Randall was saying, it would be $500 that they would get on top of that, instead of taking each five-year out like 1,200 or 2,500 or whatever. So, like, now, I was just mentioning particular names so that we would have that. Yes, Nathan?
Roger's doing some calculations here, and so that would make a 45-year employee would make $10,000 a year more than a, than a new employee in the same job.
That's it, breaking down the way you're...
If that makes it, if that makes it clear. That's right. That's 800 bucks a lot more.
Then you're making about 10,000 more than a new one.
Right. And then if you end up hiring in a new employee, that's where we have been keeping track of who's made what for the tiered. So, and they have their base employment within the salary ordinance.
I don't think that would clear it up for a little bit.
I have another question.
Yes.
So, the 500, is that for both department heads and second deputies and other employees? Or is that a different amount for the second?
I'm sorry.
I think getting over 20...
Right, and you're just talking department heads and first deputies, correct? Yeah, I mean, the 1,200, I'd say you take that, you know, the same, same way. Try to get that 1,200 all the way out there, which is five steps is what it is. And what is the 1,200 in five steps? It's, it's not quite, you could go to 1,250 and be 250 bucks, half of what we did with the department.
For the, okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yeah. I'm just looking at it, I mean...
So, we're something there on whether or not we're going to 45. My two cents on this is, if we cap the tier system at 20-years, let's use as an example, we hire somebody and at 25-years-old, he stays 20-years, he's going to be 45-years-old, still hirable elsewhere. If you take that another 10-years, after the 30-years, then he's going to be 55, which is probably going to keep him here at 45. You know, not to do age discrimination, but the older you get, the harder it is to, to find other work. Now, if you've got a 20-year employee that's 45-years-old...
They could probably go on to do something else if they want to.
That's the only problem I have with putting the tier at 20.
So, looking at the quick math here, for us to go out to 45, looks like the bill would be around 36,600. That's, that's...
Based on the people that we have here?
Maybe based on this, because you got, you got to give two $500 to people that are at 45. Then you got to put them in with the three that are at 40, because now they're over 40, and bump that one too. So, that makes five people at $500. Then you've got another two people that are between 35 and 40. Now, that makes 700 people at that $500 level. So, you're talking a grand, 2,500, 3,500, 5,500, and 7,000. That comes to a bill of 19,500 additional, on top of 17,100 you had listed here.
It might be a little, did you take the other end to affect the 250?
No, I did not. This is, I did everybody on this sheet at 500, so it could be...
Some of it, yeah, a little bit cheaper, yeah.
Did you follow what I'm saying there? We've got two that are going to get 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, five increases.
Are they only if we go to 45-years?
Yeah. Two of them are going to get a $2,500 bump next year. We got three of them that are going to get a $2,000 bump.
So, we're going...
Two of them, another two that are going to get a $1,500. So, you just keep adding them up, and you're about 19,500 additional money. So, these people that have been there for a long time, you know, I'm just thinking, are they still in anything else, or are they gone? What do you mean, are they gone? Yeah, I'm just...
They've been there a long time, Greg.
Yeah.
Probably going to get hired somewhere else. You're not going to be a whipper. Well, that's my view. If they leave, you know, 25, and they leave in 20-years, because in your 20-years, you're going to be 45-years-old, going to have your perp, you're going to get hired a perp. You've still got a good 20-years left to work. You know, I mean, anybody in their prime, if they found something better, they're going to jump on that. But if we draw that out 10 more years, then you're getting into an area that cuts the odds down. But again, that's just... odds down, but, but again, that's just my, my thought on that, if you have it.
I, I look at, at some of this and say, why is someone still here?
Maybe it's like...
So, yeah, I mean, this is a job that they don't get to a point to where they do not like it, hasn't changed. Um, it's the same job, uh, you got one, two, three, three employees that have been here over forty years, that means they started when they were kids. And I know one of them's older than me, but the other, I don't know if Jeanne Anne is older than me, uh, she may be a year or two.
Mark, do you have anything to throw into this bracket?
What's the longest tiered employee at the Highway Department, Wiggins?
Wiggins and Doug were forty-one years.
Both on forty-one years, been there?
They're both, Ron sixty-three, and, and I'd say that he's probably about sixty-three also.
Yeah.
Hey, Wiggins did pretty good.
Both come out, just out of high school, they started out of high school.
Yeah.
The job Ron's ever had. And you know why he's there? Insurance.
Who, uh?
He's there for insurance.
Insurance.
Yeah.
Yeah, so...
I can ask you a question, why they still there, easy.
Yeah.
Benefits and insurance, I'm telling you right now.
Our insurance is good.
It is good. Thank the guy at the chief.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Well, speaking for the Health Trustee Board, we've kept it that way because the wages weren't competitive, so we kept the insurance benefit very good to make up for the, for the lower pay.
Yeah.
We've had some pretty good luck working with our clientele this last year.
Right, and we've been, we've made a lot of changes since my tenure, we've made a lot of changes to that Health Trust to keep it as, as affordable for the county, for the county side as we possibly can.
Yes.
I mean, whenever we, uh, started doing the, the points thing for your, their health risk assessment, all that stuff, I mean, we started with the health risk assessment, then we just kept adding to it to help keep our costs down for the county as much as possible. And then, it's just like everybody knows, that has ever had any deals with the insurance at all, it's just a gamble about, you know, whether you're gonna have to use it or not. So, and that's what we, we've had a lot of opportunities to lock in different programs for the insurance company to where we would know what the cost would be, but I kinda like to gamble a little bit, and so far it's paid off for us pretty well. Uh, it's about a million dollars to get locked into one of those programs to where you're locked in, and a million dollars, that's, that's a quarter of our health insurance, so I'm al- I'm already twenty-five percent ahead of the game on the odds. So, that's kind of what we do, it's, I've spent, I've spent a lot of time over the years on the health insurance, and, uh, and they know that, and they, they know I don't, they can't beat me around the bush, I've got enough experience in it now, that I know what they're talking about, and that's what scares them dead.
They're really good, working really well.
And Cyto has a, has done a tremendous job for us.
They have.
I have a question for Roger. Who's our competition for your workforce?
Um, there, until we've done what we've done with races, my biggest competition is probably Endo.
Endo, going to the state.
Yeah, going to higher paying wage, but I'll be honest with you, I just hired a guy from Knox County, and I just hired a guy that worked with, at Orange County, one, the Orange County's really much, but, the county itself. Um, so, I mean, I've got guys now, I mean, one from, from Knox County actually lives in Sandburg, so it's not like he lives miles, miles away, but, uh, he came because of what we pay him in benefits, so right now, we're, we're doing good, I mean, we, we, we're competitive.
Mm-hmm.
But as far as my biggest competitors in the past, Endo wasn't, and they gave that big one-time raise, they got them back up above us, and now we're back basically even or above them.
Are we pretty comparable to state benefits?
Yeah.
When it comes to insurance and...
Well, I don't know, I don't know much about their insurance.
Yeah, and I, I think we're, I think, I think we're, actually, we have better insurance than them.
Now, I do know, I've sat in a chief role, individual, I've sat in on a lot of roundtables at different ICS conferences and things, and when it comes to the benefits, countywide to countywide, we're right there, yeah, we're right there.
And I think we've got better insurance plan than the state does, because the state's the same for all employees, no matter who you work for, the state, not just Endo, but whether you work for...
Prison or whatever.
Department of Corrections or anybody, the state insurance is the state insurance, and we've got, we've got a better plan than they've got.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're getting there, trust me, we're getting there, we're all going to our end.
Well, I just look at it, and when you got these tenured employees that, you know, in probation and in the circuit, Superior Court, um, that must be a skill set that they have...
Yes.
Keeps them...
Yes.
In that job, the other alternative would be change skill sets or change counties or...
I, I agree completely, that's a, that's a skill set that, one thing, and not a lot of people in the general public have, they can't just walk in and do the core reporting and, and that type, type of stuff, so, and then, that's what they like to do, so...
I would like to see higher than five hundred, maybe six hundred and four hundred. I think for your, not your, your first deputies and department heads, but I think the lower one, I remember when there was a five hundred dollar raise, it felt like you got kicked and got, back when county only gave you five hundred dollar raises, uh, I, I think it's, employees are gonna look at it as a slap in the face, that they don't appreciate us, and I think you should be higher, either six hundred, four hundred, seven fifty, five hundred, I think you should be higher than just five hundred.
Just longevity, though, they still get raises.
I understand you.
This is on top of that.
Yeah, you're saying two hundred and fifty dollar, um...
For the, for the regular working person?
Yeah.
I don't think that's enough. I would rather see it's maybe six hundred and four hundred, or seven fifty.
What are you talking about?
That's fifty-seven hundred dollars. It'd be fifty seven, they'd make fifty, with what Randall said, they would be making, uh, fifty-seven hundred dollars more than somebody that just hires them.
At the end, at forty-five, at forty-five years, yeah. Well, Brian's talking about, he's handing them two hundred and fifty dollars for the year, divide that by two thousand and eighty, that's about twelve cents.
Well, they, they would still get the, they would still get the COLA increase.
I understand that.
Awesome.
I know, I understand what he's talking about too, with the...
And I do too, I, I, in one year, it was a two hundred dollar raise, I mean, it was like twelve cents on...
Basically, and I wasn't here then, and basically it was, keep your money.
Yeah.
Right.
All right, keep your money.
But if it's a day, we were stopping at twenty anyway, it would've been nothing anyway, right?
Yeah.
We were gonna go to twenty and nothing.
Well, they, they still get their COLA increase.
Right.
Yeah, they do.
Now we're doing two fifty and five, we was gonna do zero, I, I think it's fair.
Say it's, for the, the first deputies and that, they'd be ten, they'd be making ten thousand dollars a year more than somebody just hired in, and that's kind of the way you need to look at this, is, what that forty-five-year employee is gonna be making above a new hire. And that was the whole idea behind this tier system, was to make, so that the new hire weren't, day one wasn't making the same money you've been here for twenty years.
Yes.
So it's, it's, for the forty-five-year employee, the, that's the first deputy, the second deputy in that job would be making half as much, over half as much, that's what the first deputy is. And something too, to keep, kinda keep in mind, that first deputy is the office holder when the office holder is out of the office, that second deputy is not. So, that responsibility's gotta be worked.
Okay, so we've had, um, five hundred and two fifty mentioned, we've had six hundred and four hundred mentioned, um, and then we've had the twenty years, so, um, I guess I would, first of all, entertain a motion that we just stay, that we go out as far as like the twenty year, stay there at that twenty-year tier. So, is there anybody that wants to make that motion?
Am I understanding to not make any changes? Or keep twenty-year as is?
To keep the twenty, well, I guess just that maybe make a motion that we're not going out any further with the tiers as far as like what they were implemented last year, any further than the twenty year. And then, we would make a motion on how you want to do, like, the increments, do you want it to be five hundred per five-year gap up to forty-five years, or do you want it to be six hundred, and, does that make sense?
First motion is we leave it, we stop at twenty, is that right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Is there anybody?
If somebody wants to make that motion.
Yeah, I'm a little bit confused, so if we, if we're stopping at twenty years, basically staying where we are, we're going to do something else to do this additional money later?
Yes, we could do that, so that it's not, that we're not doing the cumulative...
Not tiered, it's something different.
Yes, not the tiered per se.
All right, now I'll make that motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
I don't, I think we need clarification on that.
Okay.
I, I don't, because it's still a tiered system, but it's just gonna be a different tier.
Okay.
Is that right? Is that what this motion is?
Just stopping at twenty like we already have.
Well, yeah, I guess.
Yeah, if it is, on bottom, ten, fifteen, twenty, as it is now.
Now, and then we could have a...
But again, twenty.
And then we could have another motion that we can go as a di...
Add a different rate.
At a different rate, yes. The twenty-year tier system as is, going at the twenty-five, you know, up through the, up through the seventy-five hundred dollars for the department heads, first deputies, elected officials, and then for the second deputies, other employees, it would top out at twenty or forty-two hundred dollars, that's what you guys put in place last year.
Yeah, same as last year, just caps it twenty years, there'll be no more tier after your...
Not, not that kind of tier.
Not that kind of tier.
Not of that either.
Not the twenty-five hundred or the twelve hundred, you know, topping out at that.
I think that needs to be two different motions. I think the one motion is we stop at twenty-year, we're not moving forward.
Correct, and that's what this motion is.
Okay.
Okay, so she's made the motion that we keep the twenty-year tier system as implemented last year. Do I have a second? Okay.
I can't believe you.
Okay, well then if you have it, if somebody else wants to make a difference, since we don't have a second, that's fallen by the wayside, so how would you want the motion to read?
I would propose the one thing, forty-five years, uh, the same up to the twenty-year, at twenty-five year, you're adding six hundred for the first deputy, four hundred for the seconds, and for, for other employees going out to the forty-five-year mark.
Okay.
Oh, are you, is that the motion you're making?
Okay, so Brian has made a motion to go out to forty-five years, with it being the same up through twenty years as implemented last year, with an additional six hundred dollars for first deputies, department heads, elected officials, per five-year increment, and four hundred dollars for second deputies and other employees each five-year increment. Do I have a second on that?
I'll make a second.
Okay, Karen seconded, all those in favor say aye?
Uh, it's low call.
Okay, low call, Brian?
Aye.
Jerry?
Aye.
Randall?
Um, I'm gonna vote nay, not because I don't want it, I just don't want it today, right this minute, without us putting it down on paper and getting it figured out how much it's gonna cost us like we did the other, and I think we have time to do that between now and our Monday meeting in a week and a half, so I'm gonna go nay.
Okay.
We know our time.
It's my biggest, my, uh, everybody here, it's our biggest thing in our budget, we need some numbers, some ideas what we're doing.
Okay.
Uh, that's on my side.
Yeah, I think that's why we have this meeting today, and Roger...
It's not open, if you push it off, it's a little...
I'll change my vote.
Okay, Randall, yes, Ron?
No.
No, Brent?
No.
No, Karen?
Yes.
Yes, and I'll be a yes.
Six and four?
One, two, three.
Five and two, for six hundred and four hundred after the twenty year. Okay.
So, that goes out to the forty-five?
Yes, out to the forty-five years.
And that goes fast, right?
Yes.
One, two, three, four.
Yes, okay, so next up would be, um, in the past, we have said that we would, you know, try to give a higher raise, but if not, at least go the, uh, cost of living, and so for twenty twenty-six, I just looked it up a few moments ago, it is two point five percent, so, I just Googled it under cost of living.
Two seven.
Well, the other day, I thought it was like two point eight, but I just looked it up and it says...
Yeah, I was a June eleven.
Yeah, yeah, just, yeah.
I think I looked up, I think I looked up something else.
That's the inflation rate?
Two seven.
The cost of living was two point five, yes. I, I think a few months ago, it was like at two point eight or two point seven, something like that, so it has dropped.
Yeah, it's dropped, but this time, we're not...
I don't know, I'm looking at...
It might be what we did last year, or four.
We did four last year. We've done above the COLA, there's a high danger.
Yeah.
But I think given what we don't know about the SBA impacts, that we should skip to the COLA.
Yes.
At least, my heart.
And I don't think it is, that's something we're worried regarding, I'm just giving suggestions to a bunch of times, I've heard.
I think we should vote aye, and then they can vote a no.
That's where I keep going.
And you don't have to, you don't have to salary-wise, but you can...
Twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
It's not getting low.
We just, we just got, okay, that's where I'm scared.
Yeah.
I'm not having a chance to look at it, on where we're at.
And two point seven's twenty twenty-five COLA increase, I still have to keep coming up to that.
You should vote aye. You still got...
My feeling on...
Look at that, just the salaries already take care of it.
My feeling on this is put it at four percent, knowing that, you know, not saying we're giving you four percent, but they could put it in their budget, and then we can come back budget time and cut that number.
As long as we still have the option, but...
Yeah, we still have the option, cut a number.
Yeah, we don't have to...
We can aye, and then we can back down.
Yes.
Because it happens every year, we have this in here, and somebody puts it down low again, they didn't get a message or an email or whatever.
Well, I think that's why we were meeting today, was to keep that information.
I'm gonna argue, you guys, right, here's five percent, that's our department, five percent.
And I don't think we can afford that.
I didn't say that.
You can't, no. So I'm, so I'm just giving, I'm just not gonna change it at budget... We have to change it at budget time.
I don't make a motion that would give the COLA raise to four percent.
Change the legislature. As long as, I'll say that, as long as we still have the option to adjust it at budget time.
We have the option to do it anyway.
I would say in the motion, it needs to say for planning purposes.
For planning purposes.
Budget planning purposes. Because if you put in there that we're approving at four percent COLA, somebody will
So, that's what
Last year is just give me an idea what you guys are thinking.
Right.
It's not a secret, come on, it's not a secret. It's part of our budgets. Just give me an idea, and I'm not waiting to keep you informed, just tell me what you're thinking. I'll probably leave mine at five percent.
I'll make the motion that we go with the COLA raise at four percent.
For planning purposes.
Purposes only, it is subject to change budget composition.
Five percent. Okay, so Brett made a motion to plan at a four point, uh, four point zero raise with option to reduce at budget time.
So, four percent plan. Can I throw something in here that might come up? Because when I was figuring mine, and you can't, I was sitting there trying to figure out that four percent would be on your base salary.
Correct, it's not including
You gotta back and figure what, you know, what the salaries were, then the five percent I went back to twenty-four, then the five percent, or excuse me, yeah.
Yeah.
What did I do last year, four, five?
Four percent.
You're right.
Then I did my five percent on top of that.
Correct.
Or you're gonna get it again this year.
Yes.
Then the tier system goes
Yes, exactly. The raise is not on top of the tiered.
Heather, most of the budgets have a line item for longevity?
They did. They won't this year.
Actually, they sure don't think.
Well
Because we're not doing longevity, right?
Twenty-six, twenty-five based longevity, twenty-six will not.
Will have a longevity, but will this tiered system be an additional line item?
No.
So, they're talking about, we get three or four years down the road, people don't remember
Brooke made the comment, she said, I hope you can explain that when you leave, I hope you can explain that to the next person.
My office has a
They are keeping it.
Their start date, when they receive the tier yearly.
So, she started
They do it like this, yeah, so they have that, and then in the salary ordinance,
they also have it listed as base salaries in there.
Can I see the salary ordinance?
Do we have a motion?
We do.
Yeah. Go ahead, Brooke, I'll show you the budget this morning.
So, Brett made a motion for a four percent raise for planning purposes with option to reduce at budget time. Brian seconded, I guess I'll do a roll call vote. Brian?
We have some discussion.
Okay, yes, okay.
Do we need to, if we're gonna do that, do we need to make sure that we tell the people that are T U P the same as judicial system, that they're getting no raise?
Yes, we do.
Because that came out from the state.
Correct.
Does that need to be added to the motion?
That we would follow the guidelines?
Yeah.
Of the state.
You don't want them putting in four percent, you're not gonna get a four percent.
I think they've probably already been notified.
Well, part of it, he said, is adjusting his budget.
The judiciary already got the notice from Supreme Court.
Statute anyway.
It actually came from the state budget office this year. They preempted any sort of notice from the Supreme Court. So, the, the judges, the elected prosecutor, and because of parity, the public defender will not be seeing the raises. The sheriff's, the sheriff's, uh, income is based on the percentage of prosecutors, and so, it'll stay flat.
Okay.
Well, we're past the motion, let's get to that. But we're discussing it, aren't we?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, then we, just amend the motion to include
Okay.
So
So, you made a motion for a four percent raise with the option to reduce at budget time for planning purposes, plus, no raises for the, no raises for judicial
Due to the state.
Parity.
Yeah, and parity for the state. Right.
The state.
Yes, for the state. Right, exactly, per the state.
Well, don't you only give the judicial officers a five thousand dollar flat local contribution anyway?
Yes.
Except for like the public defender and the sheriff, and then I was gonna ask a question. Fun?
The public defender is getting that five thousand dollar parity.
I know, but I mean, she's also in for a regular raise. No, no, hers is just, no, hers is set by that.
Not a just type to the prosecutor, which he is.
So, she will not.
I guess I'm saying that, that from where I'm sitting, adding that to the motion is unnecessarily, unnecessary surplus.
Okay.
Because it's already fixed by the state.
We could change it if we wanted to.
Okay.
I should try to make it clear, like, at budget time, what they needed to put in.
Okay.
I guess we will.
Okay, we, yes, we'll go back to, made a motion for a four percent raise for planning purposes with the option to reduce at budget time. That was made by Brent, Brian seconded, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
I'm nay.
Karen's nay.
I'll be a no.
Okay, okay, I'll do roll call then. Brian?
Yeah.
Jerry?
Aye.
Randall?
Yeah.
Ron, you said no. Okay, Brent?
Aye.
Okay. Karen?
No.
No, and I'll be a yes. Okay. Okay, so while we were talking about the judicial part of things, so are the deputy, because on this, the, that Heather, the email that she sent to us, so for instance, like it says, a part-time prosecutor, and then a chief deputy prosecutor, so they don't get any kind of raise either?
They're tied to prosecutor and first deputy job?
So
That is normally a part of Chief Justice Rush's letter.
Okay.
And so, my assumption is that the state budget office letter preempting that
Okay.
is addressing it the same way. I do not recall that they spelled anything out by department or by level. They just said, no raises this year.
Okay. Okay. So, are there any other, um, any other salary issues?
I have a question.
Okay.
Did he send out? Is this what Ben sent? I wasn't
Yes, yes, yeah.
Is this saying that we, for twenty twenty-five, he thinks we're gonna be positive six sixty?
No. So, what that means on that worksheet, what he sent you, that is how things would be if, um, well, yeah, maybe on that, but it was, that is only if things were set up right now. He was trying to show you how our lit structure is right now, and what it would look like if we were under the new lit structure. So, our actual lit structure is this on the left, right?
So, negative three, don't you think?
No.
We have to be set up under the new lit structure. What's the, what's the date for that?
Uh, the new lit structure is the one that we have to have by twenty twenty-seven, implementing it for twenty twenty-eight.
Okay, so for purposes right now, we just care about the first call?
Yes, he was just showing like where we would be at today if this was the way things were. So, we're gonna be losing a lot of money. Um, is there any other salary issues that anybody can think of that we need to discuss before budget time, budgets being turned in?
Just a reminder, I know what things look like, but my, uh, my budget proposal will include moving any parity with the judges and prosecutor and public defender this year. I'm just saying it as a reminder, I don't think it, I wouldn't say discussion today, it's a budget. I mean, unless you choose to, it's, it's a budget concern.
Okay.
That's what my budget's gonna look like.
Okay. Okay, if there's not any other discussion, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay, Ron, second?
Second.
Second by Brent, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.